Good afternoon and welcome to the special select board meeting for Friday, March twenty seventh. This is Select Board Chair Marie Angelita. I will be confirming that all members and persons and anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Richard Foster?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom LaCoucha?
Yes.
Mark Strange? All right, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons? Yes. Paul Fisterick?
Yes.
Debbie Howes? Yes. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Fire Chief Dearborn?
Yes.
Rebecca Townsend?
Yes.
Mary Beth Bergeron?
Yes.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are encouraged and allowed to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participations required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom as posted on Town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair knows otherwise. Meeting business ground rules. We're now turning to the first agenda item. Before we do so, permit me to cover some of the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of the business and to insert accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any further comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to moot your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait till the chair yields more to use and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Lynn, do you have any announcements?
I do. I just wanted to let everyone know that the LED streetlight installation has started. You'll see Arden Engineering around town on various streets switching out the high-pressure sodium light to the LED fixtures. A press release was put out yesterday. There's also an interactive map that residents can follow along to see what streets have been done and what streets are still up to be done. That's available on the DPW website under streetlights. That's all I had for an update this week.
Okay, thank you. I want to begin before the Select Board comments, I have written a statement. I want to thank the residents of Long Meadow for their cooperation and patience during this difficult time. We are social distancing together. I've been honored to be part of the weekly virtual emergency management meeting organized by the head of emergency management, Chief Dearborn. Our emergency management task force has been proactive the past month in dealing with this crisis. Issues I hear about being addressed this week around the country were addressed weeks ago by our leadership. The ordering of supplies was suppressed to the federal government and strategic reserves, separation of our first responder teams, and housing for our first responders. I've been especially impressed by our new leader Lynn Simmons. She's not only getting the job done, but excelling. The basic functions of town government remain ongoing. Employees are being paid, our new streetlights are being installed, and the Dalton VPW projects are moving forward. Long Meadow is in good shape in regards to supplies and organization. The work by Stephen Crane and Lynn Simmons to regionalize our health department with East Long Meadow has been especially timely. We have more resources available to the town and new grants are coming in. Beth Hirschhorn, the head of our health department, is a town treasure. Her years of experience, knowledge, and organization are priceless. She's pulling together a team of nurses to support the public health nurse Carol Steiner with the increased workload. The school nurses are working together with her. Organizations are working together throughout the Commonwealth and country. The chief reached out to the head of EMS in a town in the state of Washington to learn how to prepare for the coming virus. Our town managers and list serve with towns across the Commonwealth to share knowledge and resources. Long Meadow is in a unique position for a town our size. We have high-quality and well-equipped ambulance service. The chief has three ambulances fully equipped. He's using the third ambulance exclusively for virus patients. We have an amazing regional dispatch with the best and newest equipment and a staff educated with the newest and best procedures. We are near some of the best hospitals in the Commonwealth. All our town departments are working tirelessly to help the residents through this unprecedented crisis. We need your cooperation. Contact us if you have problems or if your neighbor is in trouble. Meals on Wheels is still functioning, as is the food pantry. We have an older population and we need to look out for each other. Do not congregate in groups when you are outside walking. Please keep an eye on children. Who with the good weather will want to go outside? Group sports will not be tolerated in the park. We're not only managing the current crisis, but we're planning for recovery. The departments are tracking expenses and planning how to reopen in a thoughtful and careful manner once they're given the appropriate guidelines by our state authorities. Be safe and let social distance together. Thank you. I'm going to go through the Select Board members to see if there are any further Select Board comments. Mark Gold?
Thanks, Marie. The only quick comment I have is that I got a call from a resident who wanted to remind people about this US Census. Everybody's in the house, please complete your US Census. It is important to the town. I thought I'd throw that in. Thank you. I also want to acknowledge the work that's being done by Lynn and the staff of the town. Just a great job.
Thank you. Richard Foster?
No comments, Marie.
Tom LaCoucha?
Yes, I'm very satisfied with the way the town has responded to this. This is a unique time in history. We have families home without sports teams, have sport practices, drawing them out. So it's really a special time for families to spend with each other, but I also recognize the stress it's going to cause and issues that families are going to put on the table. And I just hope people are using proper, appropriate resources if they need to. It's nice to see all the folks from our town out there, walking around. I've been down by the river and I've seen more people on there than ever before. And they are keeping appropriate distance from each other. And I think as a town, people are responding very adequately. I appreciate when I'm in stores, that people are keeping us a good social distance. And so hopefully this will be over soon.
Thank you. Mark Strange, were you able to join us?
I'm here. So I, how you doing? Good to see you. So I just echo everybody's comments, wishing everybody good health and stay strong and we'll get through all this.
Okay, thank you. Now, we do not have public comments for this meeting. It's a special meeting. But if you do want to send comments, you can also send us emails for the next meeting. All right, why don't we move directly into the update on COVID nineteen? Or to give us an update?
Yep. Good morning. Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak. I first want to thank the entire task force team, department heads for their leadership, dedication of this. It's been incredibly rewarding experience to work with this team. Lynn is doing a remarkable job and I greatly appreciate her leadership. I also want to personally thank all the public safety officials, police, and the fire, DPW. They've, this is an incredibly stressful and difficult situation to deal with. They are setting the bar for the region. People are calling us to see how we're doing it, and that's always been my expectation for our community. I'm sad to report this morning that our cases of confirmed COVID nineteen continue to rise within our community. We have several new cases being reported this morning. Some of these folks are at home recovering and some of them are hospitalized. I just want to be clear to the public that we will and are not allowed to disclose addresses and locations of these patients. They do have privacy rights. I don't want everybody to get hung up on the numbers, though. Due to the limits in testing and the delay in getting test results, we fully believe that the spread of COVID is much more extensive than the numbers suggest. With that being said, the importance of social distancing cannot be overemphasized. You need to engage in social distancing no matter what age or what you're doing. This is for kids, for parents, and particularly to protect our vulnerable populations. We're getting very busy. Over the past two days, we've seen a spike in demands for service. On several occasions yesterday, all three ambulants were deployed and are transporting patients. We're also seeing patients in their houses and doing telemedicine, communicating directly with a doctor. And in those cases, we're making recommendations on how they can treat themselves at home. The recommendation is if you believe you have COVID symptoms, to call your primary care physician and have a discussion with them. If you feel, if they recommend you need to go to the hospital, that is when you should call nine one one. Not every case of COVID requires hospitalization or even evaluation. A significant number of these cases are very minor symptoms that are not much more severe than a cold or the flu. However, if you have an underlying medical condition, you should absolutely consult your doctor. And if you're having difficulty breathing or some other symptom that you feel is increasing rapidly, call nine one one. Do not call nine one one with general questions. We have several, there's several resources for that. With the Fire Department staffing plan and the Police Department staffing plan, we've created separation in both of our departments. It is currently working very well. In the Fire Department, I'm happy to report this morning that we are one hundred percent staffed. We did have some folks in quarantine and some folks that were out sick. Everyone has returned to work and we're, for the moment, we're currently staffed. That is not the case in other communities. Public safety is taking a hit with this, where they're losing a large number of the public safety folks. I'm very glad we took our actions in these staffing plans early and I'm proud of my staff for doing that. We're very fortunate, yesterday, those in the community may have seen a National Guard rolling through with the guys with all their garb on. That was our delivery from the national stockpile. So currently, we believe we have enough stock to last us a couple of weeks. We're already in the queue for more supplies for public safety and DPW, so we're in good shape there. We are using a lot of supplies, though, at a much higher rate than we anticipated. It's an incredibly stressful time for not only the first responders, but the whole community. I appreciate the fact that we're getting a lot of support from the community, notes and calls. So we really appreciate that. We all need to work together to get through this. This morning, we initiated the enhanced rules for social distancing at all our parks. I understand that some folks believe this is inconvenient. It's for your own safety. You'll see some signboards around town reminding people about social distancing. Social distancing is our primary weapon against the spread of this virus. We need to flatten the curve. And I believe, I honestly believe it's working. Our hospitals are still manageable. Our run volume is still manageable. And that's because of social distancing. So please, 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 engage in social distancing in all of your activities. I'm open for any questions from the board. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Mark Gold, do you have any questions for the chief?
None, thank you.
Richard Foster?
None, thank you.
Tom LaCoucha?
Yeah, chief, so if people are looking for other sorts of information, can they still dial four one one?
It's actually two one one, Tom.
Oh, two one one, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that is available. It's a state resource.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mark Strange?
No questions, thanks, chief.
Okay, thank you very much, chief.
Okay, folks, I'm going to jump off. If there's anything, feel free to email me. I've actually got a Mima call here in two minutes.
Okay, thank you for all your hard work and thank your team.
I will, thank you.
Lynn, do you have anything you want to add to the COVID update?
Uh, no, not this time.
Okay, why don't we move on to the vote on the DPW new facility delay claim and update on the twenty one E notice. Mary Beth, do you want to give me a little review on the delay claim that your building committee reviewed yesterday? And identify yourself in your position, please.
Yes, Mary Beth Bergeron, Chairman of the Building Committee. The Building Committee met two days ago and discussed in detail the DPW new facility delay claim. We believe that, I personally know that Lynn, our town manager, met with Colliers a number of times with the contractor. I participated in those meetings. I do believe that this is the best that we're going to be able to negotiate on this delay claim. I think a particularly attractive asset is the letter dated March twenty fifth from W.J. Monford, where they indicate they will not charge us for any further delays or costs involved with the delay from getting this to approval. They submitted their delay claim back in September. They have incurred additional expenses as a result of the ATM found on the site, but they will not charge us for those additional costs. And so therefore, the Building Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the Select Board approve this CPO.
Okay. Lynn, do you want to add anything to the update that Mary Beth just gave us?
Um, sure. So I think as Mary Beth stated, this has been around since, actually predates September. It started last May, so it's been ten, almost eleven months now. This has been being discussed. September, there were additional documentation received. And then I think a combination of factors led it six months to where we are now. We did have quite a few conversations and some back and forth negotiation. And this is the total that was agreed upon. And I think it's in the best interest of the town to settle this and move on.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm going to ask each Select Board member if they have questions. If there's questions for Mary Beth or Lynn, please direct a question. Mark Gold?
Thanks, chief. I, because I think when this was initially discussed, one of the things I said back then and I hadn't seen in education, I mean, we've got here is salt marsh, about fifteen thousand dollars. But, you know, and that's taken on salt marsh, but each one of these subcontractors, you know, I thought that see, you know, is this because of new labor charges or new labor contract? Is it materials? So how did they come up with that? Because these numbers are just thrown in there. And I just, my question, A, is, has the Building Committee or anybody else seen greater detail to these numbers? And if they have, why wasn't that in our packet? And if they haven't, how would subcontractors coming up with these numbers?
Well, I don't know. Can I answer that, Marie?
Yeah, I think she, he mentioned Building Committee.
Okay, yes. Mark, the specific costs involved in the delay claim have to do with increased material costs. You have to remember that these people did this job to begin in September of two thousand and eighteen. Where a year and a half later, clearly there have been increased in material costs as well as mandated labor costs, because this is the union job and the labor costs go up every year. Those are negotiated and are outside of our control.
Right.
There was, there was a substantial amount of, there was a substantial amount of background information on each one of those contractors submitted, reviewed, and sent out to independent estimators by both Colliers and Weston and Sampson to review. You know, to be honest with you, they felt that it was a little high. But certainly, given the current circumstances and as well as the delay since September, when this final delay claim came in, I, we felt that it was a reasonable expectation for the town to pay those costs.
Lynn, do you want to respond?
Yes, Mark, I do have all the backup documentation. I'm happy to send you that file. It was too large to attach to this agenda. There were two hundred and nine pages. So I do have it and I'm happy to send it to you.
Do you have another question, Mark?
Nope.
Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't have a question, one comment. I'd like to thank Lynn and the Building Committee for all the hard work they put in. This has been a long-awaited task. I know they've put a lot of hours into it. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Tom LaCoucha, any questions or comments?
I just agree with what Richard said. Thanks for all the hard work that people put into this.
Thank you. Mark Strange, any questions or comments?
I just have one question. So how are we going to pay for, pay for the, the delay claim? Is that, is that within our contingency or is that going to be a bonus?
No, it will be essentially when we did the town meeting in October, we allocated certain funds towards this claim at the full amount, actually. So it's already included in the budget and coming out of contingency funds.
Thank you.
And I just want to make a comment. I've seen this number and the first number that was coming towards us was much higher. So I want to thank the hard work of the Building Committee as well as Lynn and really struggling and wrestling this down to a better number. Thank you. All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the... Oh, Mark, you have another question? I'll go around one more time.
Your last comment was interesting. You said they ripped the number down. I guess, you know, I don't want to necessarily air our negotiations and help it, but, but I think it's important for people to understand that this wasn't a take or leave it, that it's the result of, if in fact it was the result of some negotiation. Certainly makes me feel, and, you know, Monford threw out the, a number and it was, I mean, you know, there's huge numbers there and just throwing in markups and markups on markups and then a markup on that markup, you know, seems strange. I, I'd like to hear a little bit more about it, not necessarily the numbers, but that factor was in negotiations.
Mary Beth?
Yes, well, we sat down with Colliers and went through the details of the backup on the claim. I think what is important to note here, though, is this is the delay claim that was submitted in September. But it was actually generated in May of last year. So these numbers reflect, do not reflect the additional costs incurred as a result of the ATM that was found after that period of time. And we have a letter from them dated March twenty fifth stating that they will not charge us for that period of time in which they dealt with the ATM or the additional costs involved in that period of time. So this is a bargain, Mark.
Okay, Lynn, did you have any comment for Mark?
Um, I don't have the specific numbers in front of me. A lot of the conversation from May until December happened before I got here. And then in early December, I sat down and started digging into why this has taken so long and where we were. And then trying to get this settled because dragging out longer was not helping anyone. I, so I can't speak to the prior conversations that happened. There was quite a bit of back and forth since December first. And as a result, you're seeing this here in front of you today.
All right, thank you. Richard, did you have another question or comment?
No.
Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the delay claim.
So moved.
And could you identify yourself as who this is?
Yeah, Richard Foster moved the question.
Is there a second?
Second, Tom LaCoucha.
And is that Tom LaCoucha? Thank you. And it'll be a roll call vote? Debbie? Marie? Yes? Rich?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the Building Committee and Lynn for all the hard work. And Paul Fisterick, I know you had to pull a lot of numbers together. Thank you. This was a big, big task that we're very happy to see it finally completed. Thank you, Mary Beth.
You're welcome.
All right, now we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is town meeting postponement discussion. And Lynn, do you want to tell me what your recommendations are in regards to town meeting?
Sure, we also have Rebecca Townsend on the, on the call here and on the meeting today.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. So why don't we start with Rebecca? Rebecca, do you want to give us your recommendation and a little background on town meeting postponement discussion?
Sure. First, thank you Lynn and Marie for having this meeting remotely and for accommodating me remotely. And I echo the appreciation of fellow leadership lead and all the staff, especially Chief Dearborn for his work in protecting our community. The issue of town meeting is a tricky one. I'm part of the Mass Moderators Association and moderators across the state have been dealing with what to do about town meetings that are occurring, some occurring this month into April and then in May. And we had previously been allowed to move to postpone a meeting for a weather-related emergency. And legislation has been filed that allows for moderators to postpone a meeting due to a public health emergency as well. Importantly, if the warrant has not yet been posted in a community, the Select Board can set a date later than the originally intended one. And so in talking with other officials and with the town clerk as well, one of the things that is really important is we've got to be able to have some certainty that when we do meet, it's going to be a safe meeting. And in my view, it's vitally important to... And in my view, it's vitally important to delay the meeting as long as we can, yet we can't just get rid of it. We have to have our democracy function. So it's my recommendation that we postpone to June and that the select board have a postponement in the original postponement. If we need to postpone it longer, then I can do that once the warrant is posted.
And, uh, do you want to talk a little bit about, did, did you have a specific date in mind you were recommending?
Um, it's, I, we had, we had had a discussion about this. Um, we were thinking about June twenty third. However, what has occurred to me over, um, the day that we had our discussion, um, Marie and Lynn, that is, um, we, the select board can decide when to hold this meeting. So while we traditionally have it on a Tuesday evening, you could hold it earlier in the day, say at five o'clock, or you could move it to a Sunday afternoon. And so as late as possible in June, just to try to deal, flatten the curve as, as the chief said, but, um, I'm not committed to a particular date. Um, it would be the select boards to decide the, the specific date and time.
And do you want to tell us a little bit about your thoughts on how to hold the meeting if we're still have our concerns about COVID nineteen?
So depending on where we stand, it's, it's really hard to determine how things will look in June. But let's say the state of emergency is ending, is going to be ending then, um, we could potentially have it in our usual location in the gymnasium. However, I think a lot of people will still be really uncertain about being so close to other people. And so there are a number of different options that are available to us and we don't have to decide right now. The three main options that, uh, appear before us are to have it in the gymnasium and have a breakout room in the auditorium and the cafeteria, potentially the classrooms, and hook up rooms, hook up, um, technology to allow for audio and visual interaction, uh, among the rooms. So that's one option. Um, I've talked with the town clerk about this and if we, if we are distancing ourselves, it's really hard, she said, to have the check-in process be so tight. So she doesn't really prefer that option. Um, and I'm, I'm mindful of that and the election workers as well. Second option is the football field with the bleachers. And so it's, um, it's set up for audio. It has lights, um, it's ADA compliant in terms of the, the field access. Chairs could be set up. Um, people could sit in the bleachers and so on. Third option is a variation on what Southwick did recently. Southwick had their town meeting outside. It was a special town meeting, so there were only, I think, two articles on it. They had their meeting in a parking lot and they had people separated six feet apart. Um, and the moderator conducted the meeting as he normally does. Since it was a, a short town meeting, people stood. Um, if we went to a parking lot option, there are variations in that option as well. You could have people, chairs set up in the parking lot with perhaps parking over in Long Meadow Shops and handicapped access in the lot at the high school. Or, uh, there could be people in their cars, uh, as Lynn had, had suggested with the radio frequency tuning in, um, to the audio with people being able to, uh, hear the meeting in that way. There are logistical problems with the voting and all that, but I, in any of these meetings, I would recommend a use of the consent agenda or warrant articles to be able to condense down the number of votes. Um, still allow for people to speak on, on all of the articles that they wish. Um, try some use of email questions for people who don't want to go to the meeting but do want to ask questions. Offer that email remote participation. Um, those are the, the three main options that I, that I see.
Okay, thank you very much. Lynn, do you want to add anything in regards to the postponement and possible, uh, reorganization of the town meeting?
Um, no, I support what Rebecca's saying. I think pushing it to late, uh, as late in June as possible is probably going to be our best bet. Um, I think, you know, June twenty third would be fine. If we wanted to look further out, we could do that as well. Um, but certainly anytime June twenty third or later, I would support.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Rebecca, your work with the other moderators is really key here. And I really appreciate all of the information you're gathering across the Commonwealth on the best ways for us to handle this unprecedented moment. So thank you for all your work. You've really been ahead of the curve in regards to this issue. So I'm gonna, before we even start talking about votes and anything, I just wanted to give everyone a chance to ask each of you questions. So if you have a specific question for Rebecca or Lynn, uh, please state them or if it's in the general question, uh, Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments at this point.
Uh, Mark Gold?
No questions or comments.
Uh, Tom Lakusha?
No questions or comments.
Uh, Mark Strange?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Okay. All right, uh, well, thank you very much. Uh, I think we're going to have discussion now in regards to, uh, the possible postponement date. Um, my recommendation, and the board can decide that it's not necessary, that maybe we should hold off an actual vote till we have a regular meeting rather than a special meeting, so that more people know that this is occurring. Um, but I'd like to just move directly into general questions or comments in regards to looking at the last possible dates in June. Um, Mark Gold, do you have any, um, comments in regards to that possibility?
Yeah, Marie, I, I thought I'd set the date at June twenty third. I think that people ought to know it's not gonna be in May, but their mind is. The only comment or concern I have is when do people start leaving town for the summer? You know, and, and they may, you know, if in fact school ends up being canceled and they, we don't return to camp to, to school at all this year, people may start le, leaving even sooner. And so that's my one watch out about the twenty third versus the, the sixteenth. I mean, you know, we've always tried to do a long session, but I think we ought to set the date and let people know.
Uh, are you for a vote today or should we wait till April?
I, I'd support a vote today.
Okay, thank you. Um, Richard Foster?
Yeah, Marie, I, uh, I think we should postpone as, until as late as humanly possible because we don't, there's so many unknowns at this point and we're just guessing at a time. Uh, is there any other options available to us, uh, to legislation besides having it in June? Is that, uh, is that it or is there a possibility of having it even later in the year?
Uh, Rebecca, do you want to address that?
Please. Um, if, you know, through determina, through determination with a consultation with the select board, with the emergency management director, uh, the town manager and others, if we determine that it's not safe, even using an outside meeting, if we determine it's not safe to have a meeting, what I would do is issue a, a recess and continuance. It's a declaration that we are moving the meeting and we can only move it thirty days at a time. So if we had the meeting posted for June twenty third, uh, I could move it to a different date, uh, and that declaration and continuance could be renewed. So no matter how many times we, we need to do this, we could always postpone it further.
Okay, then it's...
Richard, do you have a follow-up question for her?
No, no, based on what she said, that it really doesn't matter so much if we lock down a date today since we have the option of going for a continuance. So I'd go along with Mark. We can, we can set up a date today.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Tom Lakusha, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the thirtieth of, of June would obviously be too close to the fourth of July. Uh, but I do agree we should have the latest date that we can look at and then we may have to make adjustments to that. Um, when I looked at the venues, the, having it inside with some breakout rooms would probably be the, my main option. Um, mostly because of sound. You know, when you start looking at an outdoor venue, uh, so my second choice would be the football stadium because it is, uh, it's a great resource for us to have and use. And a lot of folks in town are familiar with that area, have been in the stadium. Uh, but when people start to talk and make public comment, you know, the echo when you have an outdoor event is something people won't be used to. So I would say we should, I'd probably do it inside if we can. And then as far as making a vote today, um, I, I think it would be helpful to give people a little more time to have some, give us some feedback, um, because again, we're just representatives of town. And so I would like to hear what people think about a June meeting date. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Strange?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't have any problems voting today on a June twenty third date. Seems very cool. Uh, I wouldn't see any reason to wait on that. We should vote.
Okay. Um, then is there a, uh, motion to accept, to postpone the town meeting to June twenty third? Unless Lynn, do you have a comment on us voting today?
That the, that is a comment or question? Marie, you're seeing us.
Question. Okay, just a minute. Let me ask Lynn, uh, did you have any question, any comments in regards to moving ahead with the vote?
Um, not necessarily. We did post it that way that you had the option to, uh, but I wasn't sure if you wanted to defer to doing it at your April sixth meeting, which is a regular meeting.
Mark Gold, you had a comment you wanted to make?
No, it was Rebecca doesn't have a comment.
A, a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. It's a question, Rebecca.
Marie, I, I just raised my hand. I wasn't, I didn't want to talk over you. The question I had, uh, for the board is you are open to having it on any date that you wish. Traditionally, we have it on a Tuesday. But I didn't know if the board wanted to consider any other day, um, before you make a final decision.
I think one of the discussions that we had, yeah, the, the other discussion we had was the time. And we, uh, are still waiting to see, we have a bylaw saying not earlier than seven. Is that it, Rebecca?
It's six, but, but give, but given, given the special legislation allowing towns to move things around, uh, I mean, it's, it's for town council to say for sure whether you could move it to, say, five o'clock, but I, I doubt that you, we would be required to hold it no earlier than six.
Well, I don't think we have to. I think it's important, as you said, to bring that up and for us to consider, but the actual location and time, we might be able to defer to a later time when we have a better idea of what we really need to do with it, unless the board feels differently. Mark Gold?
Uh, I, I, I'll make a motion that we set the time, the town meeting for, for June twenty third at seven PM in the Long Meadow High School to be potentially adjusted based on the status of the current emergency.
Yeah, Richard Foster, second.
Okay. Uh, now we'll start going into discussion, um, in regards to that motion. Uh, do you have any, um, comments on the motion, Rebecca?
If, if this would be for posting the warrant, uh, then you're, you're setting it at seven. Um, if need be, I could look into, if we had to move it earlier in the day, I could look into whether that would be permitted. I don't know whether you're, if this is a vote to post the warrant or just for a, a decided date.
Uh, Lynn, um, is, when would we have to post the warrant if we picked the date of the twenty third?
Uh, that is a good question. I may need to defer to Paul Pasteric. If he's still here, I think we'd have to work back from there with the printer.
Right. We'd probably be looking at almost like a May first, first part of May, we would post it. We need about six weeks order to get it to the printer, have it printed and delivered to the resident as required.
Uh, Rebecca, with this legislation, can we make changes before the posting of the warrant on when we postpone the town meeting?
Yes, as long as the warrant has not been posted, you can change the date. A, a, and I imagine the time...
Yeah, well, mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Um, any, uh, questions or comments? Um, Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, I think we should keep it on Tuesday at seven o'clock, the regular time. We have a lot of people who could go into town meetings for thirty, forty years and, and that's what they're expecting. So I wouldn't want to make any changes in that sense.
Mark Strange, any questions or comments?
Ditto to what Tom said.
Okay. Um, I'm comfortable with that, especially since we can now make changes. As Rebecca said, if, uh, things change drastically in the next month, we can make a change to that date and time again before the posting. Uh, but this way, if we do vote today, people do know they don't need to worry about, um, what's happening with the budget as well as when that town meeting will be. Uh, and Mark, any other que, Mark Gold, any other questions or comments before we go to a vote?
Yeah, I, I, my question is really, you know, beyond that, clearly, if, if, if we're not holding this June twenty third, there's a, an extension of this, of this emergency schedule. But, you know, I would assume that this legislature is something that doesn't take care of how we make payroll first week of July. I mean, that, my point of doing June was have a budget in place that we can start paying our employees beginning of July. So I think that's the only watch out. But like I said, I think if it goes beyond June twenty third, there's a lot of other problems that the state's gonna help us to resolve.
Um, Richard Foster, any other questions or comments?
None.
Tom Lakusha?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Lynn?
No.
Uh, Paul Pasteric, since they talked about finances, any questions or comments?
No, no, not at this point. I, I think Mark Gold was correct that if we get into a July date, we'll have other issues. Department of Revenue will issue guidance on.
Okay. All right, um, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Debbie, you want to do a roll call? Marie? Yes? Rich?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And thank you Rebecca for joining us and all your work on this, uh, issue. I'm sure we'll keep the lines of communication as you learn more and the legislation changes, um, of what we need to do in the future. So thank you again for everything you've done and being proactive in this issue. Okay, why don't we move on to the town election discussion? Uh, Lynn, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Uh, so there was a conversation and the conversation I had yesterday with Rebecca and Marie about town elections and the desire to have that after annual town meeting, because that's generally the way it's done. Um, I haven't reviewed further yet to see if it's required and if there's a requirement that it be so many days from town meeting. Maybe one of you has that information. Uh, but the thought was if we held town meeting on June twenty third, we could postpone the town election until June thirtieth.
Okay. Um, and I think the, oh, one of the issues that was mentioned yesterday by Rebecca is that if there was some sort of, something brought by citizens at town meeting, it would have to be a ballot issue, but we don't see anything on the horizon to make that an issue. Uh, questions or comments? Um, Richard Foster?
Not at this time.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, the, the issue for the, the lag between the town meeting and the town election is based on our charter allowance for a referendum to appeal any vote at town meeting. And based on, I see Rebecca shaking, shaking her head, yes. It's based on, you need to get a certain number of, of, of sign, petition signatures and then it would be able to go on to the town. and then it would be able to go on to the town, uh, the, the warrant for the, or the ballot for the election. Uh, you know, that could happen, but I think that, that delay is cancel. It's like five weeks and, and I think that the delay, the election five weeks after the town meeting would end up putting us way into the summertime where we start impacting the number of people available. So I think we, pardon the expression, roll the dice and, and if there's an appeal of a referendum on a vote at town meeting to election, that and, and pay the price literally, do it. Otherwise, we'll just plan our regular town meeting. The question I have obviously is Catherine Ingram, that's our town clerk, and, you know, when does she think she could pull off a town election with the same uncertainties we had when we were trying to set it down? You know, and we don't want to sit on election for, you know, for June, you know, fifth or sixth and find out we can't do that. So I think we need Catherine Ingram's input before we set the new date of the town election, but I would not let it, force it to be after the town meeting. If that doesn't make sense, in fact, I could conceive of it being the same day as the town.
Lynn, do you want to comment?
Uh, well, I see Rebecca, uh, shake, uh, waving her hand, so she's probably much more experienced in this than I am at this point. So I'd, uh, defer to her.
I have, I, I need to say, I can't see everybody on my screen, so if, uh, thank you very much for letting me know, uh, Rebecca is waving her hand, uh, because I wasn't ignoring you Rebecca, I can't see you.
I, I didn't think so. Um, I, I just spoke with Catherine Ingram this morning to discuss the, the town meeting, um, site possibilities as well as the election and she had sent me something from the Secretary of State's office regarding the election. So this is fresh news. The select board, uh, is permitted to move a town election, uh, only one that was previously scheduled for May thirtieth or before. So an election that is scheduled for June, like what we have, cannot be moved.
Okay.
At least according to current legislation. If something changes, she said she would forward that information along, but she had not been aware that the election date was going to be, uh, considered to be moved. And so, um, you know, she, she just sent me that information today and I talked to her about it.
Okay.
Marie, may I have a question?
Yeah.
Now, when it says setting, setting a date, um, I mean, obviously our charter has, I'm saying this, but have we really set a date at this point in time that, that new information would have an impact?
We set a date for the sixteenth, didn't we?
Yes.
I think the vote came in front of the board.
Okay, um. Might, might have been the ninth or sixteenth, okay, I, I don't recall if it had been set already or not, but it very well could have.
Okay, um, so with, uh, that new information, Lynn, do you have anything else to comment?
Um, I guess my only comment would be if the town election is held before town meeting, we would then have a brand new select board member at town meeting. And that may be fine, um, just wanted to point it out.
Well, then I will have had my last town meeting. Um, uh, let's see, well, I'll go through everyone. Richard Foster, any questions or comments?
No, I, the only comment I have, I believe, uh, Paul, in, in the springtime, we approved that schedule of events, if I'm not mistaken, it's an agenda item, and we voted on all those dates and those key points, but I may be mistaken, just seems like that's what we did. Now, I, I'm willing to go whatever direction we need to on the issue, Marie. I think it's, uh, it's, it's in line with there are other discussions even on the town meeting. We don't know, we don't know what the future's holding on this at this point. Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, I'd say that this, uh, prior meeting also, that it really would be a mistake to change the composition of the select board prior to town meeting. That, you know, we have a unified, you know, we've had some votes on this and, um, you know, people who have questions, you know, are looking at the five members that are on now, uh, in terms of, you know, we made these discussions, we, we committed ourselves to vote on it. So to bring a new person into that formula and to perhaps change the select board's position on any of the issues on the warrant would be a mistake. And I would say that we should just, um, although the state, you know, the, the Attorney General's Office or something, the Secretary of State thinks that we shouldn't change the date, I think if, if we've always done it after our town meeting, then we should continue to do it after the town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mark Strange?
Quick question, do we know if there's any contested races?
I don't know.
I don't know.
And is there going to be, will there be any, uh, ballot questions?
I don't believe we have any ballot questions.
Well, there may be based on our discussion later in this meeting.
That's true, well, I'm not sure. We'll see. Well, it's a decision that doesn't need to be made tonight, it's the beginning of the discussion and we can definitely bring this on to the next meeting and see where we stand with that. Um, Richard Foster, anything else to add?
No, I don't have anything, Marie.
Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Mark Gold?
No, it sounds like, just on what, uh, what Rebecca shared with us, we don't have the authority to move it at this point. By charters.
All right, so, um, Lynn and Rebecca, right, Lynn and Rebecca, if you could get back to us in regards to, uh, follow up on that new information that we received, as well as I remember setting the date, but we might not have, we might have just discussed a potential calendar, uh, because I was saying.
You definitely set the date.
We did definitely set the date, okay.
Yes.
All right, you did. So we'll put this on the agenda for our next meeting, that gives a chance for people to discuss it and, uh, residents to make their comments. And we can also get the information if there are any contested races at this time. And if we move it, does this allow other people to, does that change our whole schedule? When papers are turned in and things, I don't think it would, but, uh, we could get maybe a full report on that for our next meeting, Lynn?
Yes, definitely, yeah, I was going to ask that, uh, I just have some time to review this, because I'm, I'm reading what she sent and I, there, there could be some room in here for, for adjustments.
Okay, um, Mark Gold, anything else on the topic?
No.
Richard? Tom?
No, thank you.
Mark Strange?
No.
Uh, Rebecca?
No.
Oh, all right, thank you very much and we'll continue this discussion at our next meeting on April sixth. Am I giving the right date Lynn, is it April sixth?
Yes.
It is, okay, thank you. All right, we're going to, I'm moving down to item nine, which is the financial forecast discussion, which is actually the reason we had the special meeting, is, um, members of the select board were concerned on that we were setting a budget, uh, while our numbers were up in the air a bit with the COVID-nineteen crisis. So Paul, you want to give us a little bit of update on anything you have?
Um, there isn't much news that I have that is concrete, um, the Department of Revenue has not come out with any type of, of, uh, directives or anything like that, uh, to give us any hints of what they might be doing. I would assume that as the FY twenty-one budget goes through the legislature, that the state aid numbers might be adjusted and I would assume that they would be adjusted downward. But as I had mentioned to the board at a previous meeting, um, those numbers only account for about ten percent of our total revenue. Um, and I think if there was a, a large impact on state aid, um, it would be more devastating to the larger communities that rely fifty percent on state aid. So, um, again, I, I would anticipate we probably will have adjustments there. We are currently using the governor's number in the budget projections. Um, those historically have risen through the process, but as I said, they will probably either be leveled or may even decline as we move forward. But, you know, we're talking tens, maybe a few hundred thousand dollars and not millions of dollars. Um, the one thing that I will put to rest is, is there are, there have been questions about concerns over the, um, evaluations that will be used in FY twenty-one. Um, and there should be, the COVID-nineteen virus may have no impact on those because the FY twenty-one valuations are basically based on transactions that happened in town in the year two thousand and nineteen, um, before all this really started to come to a, a head. Um, what potentially may happen in the future when we get into FY twenty-two and depending on how this, how long this, 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 uh, pandemic lasts, is, you know, we may start seeing some impact at that point in time, but I would hate to even say what those impacts would be, um, because of this matter. Um, I imagine in FY, as towards the end, our current fiscal year for the last three months, um, and going into early FY twenty-one, if this, uh, pandemic continues, is we will see some drops in the meals tax. Um, I, I, I had thought maybe we'd get an indication when our March thirty-first, um, allotment came in from the state, but those are only through collections through February. So we will not see or have any indication of the impact of that, uh, those meals taxes on our next, um, allotment from the state. But again, I'm assuming and likely so that we will unlikely see a drop in meals tax. Now, meals tax for the whole, for the town on an annual basis is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, the impact I would assume is going to be in the ten thousand dollars range, um, that, you know, maybe ten or fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars for FY twenty, a little bit more far, uh, or a little bit deeper in FY twenty-one, depending on the length of this, of this pandemic. And then the other area that I would be concerned with is the, uh, building permit. Um, I think that has slowed down a little bit, um, just people not wanting contractors in their house, so on and so forth, being very protective, uh, with, you know, and rightfully so, that we would probably see a drop in those types of revenues. But again, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, in the absence of that, like I said, the state has not come forward with, um, any information regarding their state aid numbers or any type of directives, you know, telling communities to, um, you know, be careful with their estimated receipts for FY twenty-one and beyond, uh, any type of information with regard to, um, you know, valuation, any type in any which shape or form. So, um, it's all theoretical at this point in time and, and kind of assumptions on my part. Um, but again, I am not anticipating at this point in time any rate drops for FY twenty. Uh, twenty-one will, I'm certain will have a little more impact. Um, we do have a cushion with the tax levy of three hundred thousand dollars. We do have our reserves of over, you know, four million dollars. Um, and I, the other thing too is, I, I mentioned, you know, over the years, the proposition two and a half is a double edged sword. By that I mean, there's a two and a half percent increase annually that is allowed and that's where our three hundred and eleven thousand dollar cushion in, in excess capacity takes place. There is also a twenty-five dollar tax, um, um, tax rate limit. And we also have a cushion on that side. We are, we are not pushed up against that brink at this point in time. Should our values go down, we would more than likely still be able to raise the two and a half percent annually that we would have anyway. Um, what it would do to us is, um, accelerate where we've been watching, uh, the radar, would accelerate that time where we actually hit that twenty-five dollar maximum amount, um, earlier than anticipated. Um, and that, and again, right now, that is FY twenty-five with no market growth. Again, we had some valuation decreases, it would certainly accelerate that to twenty-four, twenty-three. Um, it, it all depends on how deep the evaluations, uh, may drop in the future, if they even drop.
Thank you, Paul. Lynn, do you want to add to that? Uh, financial forecast and planning?
The only thing I think I'd add is that, um, you know, we had a very robust conversation with finance committee on Monday night, uh, a year ago, but it was Monday. Um, and, uh, some of the considerations are, uh, you know, not knowing what this is going to look like in six months and, um, withholding, you know, some of the things that we could possibly wait on, you know, capital plan, um, filling some of the positions that are proposed in the FY twenty-one budget. You know, these are all things that are being considered right now because there's just so many unknowns.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go through the board for questions or comments. Uh, Richard Foster?
Not at this time, Marie.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I just, you know, the last meeting we had, I was kind of concerned, but Paul, someone might surprise to, to rest and I think that, I think it's premature to make change. Maybe now we might just have to change again, but why don't we wait to see where this thing sorts out before we make any adjustments to work, whether it's the capital or operating, see what the state actually, like, what the federal government does and I'd say sit tight for a while.
Thank you. Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. It sounds like you've really thought out how this could impact our town. The only question I had is would this affect the schools? Is there going to be any difference in fundings that the schools receive? And would any changes in their funding affect the town?
Um, again, I, when we, when we talk about state aid, um, um, the majority of our state aid is actually school funding, um, whether it's chapter seventy, whether it's circuit breaker money, or whether it's some of their other grants. Um, so the answer is, you know, yes, there will be an impact. Um, I would imagine, as I said, the legislature, um, probably trimming back on what is expected for FY twenty-one. Um, but that will not have, uh, chapter seventy would not have a direct impact on the school budget at this point in time. It's kind of a, it's a number that is coming in based upon, um, school data, but it comes into the general fund. So, um, that would be shared, um, universally amongst all the departments in town. Um, where they might get hit, um, and where the state has been really doing a, a pretty decent job is, is the reimbursements for circuit breaker, um, which are the, their special education costs. And, you know, potentially if they have to pick up more of the tab on those costs, then, you know, that's going to be borne by the whole town. Um, again, it's just too early to see at this point in time, you know, the process through the legislature. If I recall correctly, the month of April, um, the House takes it up, um, they'll give us an indication. And then once we get into May and beyond, the Senate will take it up. And, you know, hopefully by our June twenty-third town meeting date, um, they would have all that ironed out and we would know exactly what we're getting in state aid to make any adjustments if need be at that point in time.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Mark Strange?
Yeah, nothing new to add, I, you know, I, I agree with what everybody said, but kind of early in the process, there's going to be significant changes coming down the plate, um, and, uh, so we should, uh, just wait and see what, how that shakes out and then look forward from there.
Thank you. And Paul, you usually are really good at telling us where we are with our revenues and receipts and so keep those reports coming and we'll have a better idea of what we might need to do, uh, with the, uh, warrants. This year's budget, as you said, there's not too much concern, but planning for the future.
Right, okay.
Uh, anything else, Paul, you wanted to add?
No, I, I think I've all said all of these questions.
Lynn, anything?
Um, no.
Okay, Mark Gold?
No.
Richard?
No.
Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
All right, thank you. Why don't we, you'll keep this on your town manager's report, so every meeting we'll, we'll get an idea of where things are Lynn. Right, and where your planning is for the future. Thank you. Now, I pushed down to the last item, which was the tax stealing legislation. I know the Tax Stealing Task Force has talked about possibly bringing this to spring town meeting. I think we got really busy with other things, but when we hear, uh, the, you know, the market's going up and down, we don't know where property values are, I thought. going up and down, we don't know where property values are, I thought we should uh start that discussion again as a select board. There's no rush on this because uh the warrant is not being posted. Um, but, so this is just sort of like opening the discussion. Um, and so I put together a quick warrant article um to just get an idea of what, what that might look at, look like, but again, this is uh free for editing. How we will um vote, uh, if we decide to go forward, how the process will work is, um, we also received about a year ago, something from um our legal firm on how this could be handled, which would be uh the process once we decided to go through this in two different ways. I'll send you that underlying material also, so you can see what the whole process would look like if the town decided to move ahead with legislation. Um, Paul, did you want to make any um discussion or lay the groundwork for discussion here on this?
Um, and again, the, the, the tax, tax force feeling, tax feeling, task force, as you know, has been talking about this, uh, the select board has been talking about it. Um, it's probably a great idea to get it going sooner than later, given the uncertainty of um where our values, or how our values may be impacted, um, you know, in, in, in the very near term, um, as opposed to waiting around and um, you know, I don't want to say just being caught at the last minute, but being caught at the last minute. Um, no, it's, it's kind of just an outline of what a, a, a town meeting question would look like. I'm sure that we could strengthen it somewhat um with citations of the mass general laws. Um, but I would actually say that if, if the select board is serious about this legislation, um, that we get the ball rolling sooner than later in case we do hit a recession where our tax, our taxable valuations are decreasing, we will be in a much better position to address our issues having this in a backdrop uh option for the community.
Uh, Lynn, did you want to add anything to that?
I agree. I, I think starting this conversation, or pushing this conversation forward now is the right time.
Thank you. Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I, I obviously think it's a good time to do that. I, I guess my question would be, you know, I thought the steps were going to be get it at the town meeting and then get it in an election, uh, you know, as a referendum. I'm wondering if we want to do this first test as a non-binding thing, just so we can get the people, town residents talking about it, to start, start the educational process and then bring it back up at a town meeting in twenty twenty one and then, you know, get it before the town as a referendum. I think we need the referendum before we can go for a home rule legislation. That's, and, and maybe we do it in the spring and then again in the fall kind of thing. But I, I think to expect, especially under these circumstances, to get a, a fair and, and wide hearing of this and discussion is likely to be unreasonable, and I frankly concerned that to get a bad outcome.
Okay, Mark, uh, Richard Foster?
Yeah, Marie, I, I, of course, I've been opposed to this since it was first brought up, and not so much as opposed to the concept, I'm just disappointed that this was the only thing that surfaced from the uh tax force. There was no restructuring plans, there was no talk about doing anything differently in our town or streamlining. It, it was the only thing that seemed viable, everybody was just to increase the taxes. I, that's why I still stand opposed to this. I, I just, I think we could do more and we haven't done it.
Um, Tom Latusha?
Well, I, a few things. One is the state voted on this uh in the eighties. And I, when I talk to people who live in other states who pay higher taxes than I do, I, I'm of lesser value. I realize when a benefit is two and a half percent limit is, if we were to go forward on this kind of a project, I really think the time limits of it would have to be spelled out. Like if we were looking at doing it for a specific budget year, that that has to be right up front in this. If we're doing this for one year, uh, I don't think we should extend it longer than that. You know, I, uh, I probably not doing it, I don't feel so like, thank you.
Uh, Mark Strange?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is necessary, and I think it's timely. Um, if you look at how close we actually are to the twenty five, I, you know, the ballot rate per, per thousand, at some point, even if we um, you know, limit expenditures and we're, we're careful with how we spend our taxpayer money, which we typically do, we're going to hit that twenty five dollars. And at that point, we'll have some sort of legislative relief or stuff, um, whether that's in five years or seven years or ten years, at some point, we're going to hit twenty five dollars per thousand. Um, and I, I, I like Mark's idea of putting it on, on the, on the ballot and doing a non-binding referendum to see where, where we are. Uh, I mean, you know, ultimately, I think, you know, this is a, this is a state law that gives no wiggle room to localities, municipalities, uh, to choose their own fate. And I think of the town um as an opportunity to vote, if they vote for it, I figure you go with it, if they vote in town, then we should deal with the consequences.
Thank you, Mark. Um, I will send everyone the um documents that uh the task force received last year from the attorney, and there's different ways legislation can be written. One is to get rid of the twenty five dollar cap completely. The other is a series of almost like overrides, where the town has to vote to allow them to go up to a certain ceiling, and that's the new ceiling, and any other state, changes in the ceiling has to go back to a ballot vote. So that leaves a little more control in the resident's hands. So when you say we're, uh, removal of the cap, there's different ways we can go with the legislation. Um, I think Mark Gold's correct, we need to uh see what is the correct legal step going forward because we keep hearing different things. And so Lynn, if you could get us a report on, do we need to start with a town vote and then go to a ballot initiative to allow us to file for legislation? Uh, or um, can we just do this and then go with the legislation? And then the adoption, I know, has to be by ballot. Uh, they cannot, it cannot be adopted by the town without a ballot. So we'll have to find out what is the um sequencing of events that we're going to need. Um, uh, Mark Gold, do you have any other comments or questions?
Oh, no, I'm fine now.
Richard?
No.
Tom?
Uh, the idea of yearly overrides is much more appealing to me.
Mark Strange?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Lynn?
No.
Paul?
Um, I, just to go back to Tom's comment about yearly override, Tom, we, we can currently have yearly overrides up to the twenty five dollar limit, but after that is where we have to stop. So I, I, I mean, I, I guess you would still want to be able to um on an annual basis or as an ad needed basis, go ab- above that twenty five dollars um at an ad, as needed basis, the way I understand your, your comment.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Okay, okay.
All right, so we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and Lynn, could you let us know the sequencing requirements? And I will send out that document we received from the attorney to maybe keep this, this discussion going. And I'm sure the residents and finance committee and other committees will have some, want to do some input on this issue, because it's a very big issue in town. Uh, anything?
One more comment on that?
Mark?
Yeah, there, there, the, the recent legislation about school funding, uh, I, I don't know what the right word is, but it, it, it generated or did this, created a, a tax force on profit two and a half. And Senator Comerford is the, is the chairperson of that, and clearly a lot's changed in the last month or so, but I think that, you know, if he wants to, and I'll be glad to, just check to say, are they not putting that on the back burner? Or is this more important now than ever to, because it's not long now, there's eighteen or twenty other Western Mass communities in same situation. So before we go off on our own, I think we need to understand what the state may be doing for these eighteen or twenty communities. I'll be glad to try to, you know, I, I, I'll go through, you know, Brian, Brian Ash's office, I guess.
Well, I think what we need to decide is what we want as a town and what we want that legislation to look like, and then we will have something to reach out to her and say, not just we want you to address this issue, but this is how we want it addressed. So I think we should take a leadership and re, other towns have reached out to us. I know Lynn has been in communication with some other towns, so let's get our message in common, and then we'll, we'll definitely reach out. That'll be a good idea, Mark.
Good.
Anyone else to make comments or questions on this issue? Okay, it's going, we're going to that, we'll put that on the April sixth agenda. Um, now, we have on here the town meeting warrants. Um, and I think one of the reasons we were discussing that was, uh, Rebecca was mentioning, we really want to look at some consent agenda issues. So we might want to look to reorder this uh warrant, and so it's a little more streamlined to, if we do need to have, but we'll have time to deal with that, um, since we're moving the town meeting. Um, Paul, is there anything you wanted to talk about on the warrant?
No, basically between Deb and myself, it's um, and Lynn, it's, it's, it's all together at this point in time. However we shuffle it is, is fine with me. Um, we've tried to keep things in an orderly fashion with taking care of FY, uh, the current fiscal year matters first, the, you know, the budget, secondary, getting into the capital items, getting into the community preservation after that, and finally the bylaw changes. But, you know, however it's shuffled, that's fine with me.
Lynn, any comments on the warrant?
Uh, no.
Uh, Mark Gold?
Uh.
Richard?
None.
Tom?
None.
Mark Strange?
Uh, nothing, Marie.
Okay, so I think what we'll do, we're not posting it. We'll get the new schedule and when it needs to be posted, and uh we can think about how we might want to uh bundle some of these for consent agenda. All right, the last item was a resident requested uh a trash amnesty during the COVID nineteen crisis. Lynn, do you want to introduce that topic?
Sure. So there's, there's a growing uh number of requests that have come in both by phone and uh via social media, asking for trash amnesty during this coronavirus, coronavirus pandemic. Uh, the concern is that they can't get to the store to purchase the bag. Um, I've had conversations with DPW and I've had feedback from the recycling and uh solid waste commission, and um at this point in time, there, I don't recommend, and uh both of those other parties I just mentioned do not recommend a trash amnesty. Uh, there's numerous options available right now to purchase bags, and uh some of those options also have home delivery available for um groceries, and bags could be included in that. Uh, and then for anyone that truly cannot get to a store, I just ask they would call the Department of Public Works, or if they are a senior, they could call the Adult Center, and we can work something out if they can get the bags they need.
Thank you. Um, Mark Gold, any questions or comments?
I support Lynn's recommendations.
Uh, Richard?
Yeah, Marie, I, I guess I'm going to take a mi- minority view on this. I just don't think it's that big of an issue. Uh, I, I, we don't have anything to substantiate, and we give it around the holidays. It is exceptional times we're going through. It's just one less thing our residents have to worry about. And I think it's a very short period of time, uh, and obviously Lynn said they are getting more and more phone calls, so apparently it is an issue that is of concern to people. And the deeper we go into social isolation, if that's what it's called, the less contact we want with people coming to our homes or, or giving us stuff. So I, I'm in favor of just uh having an amnesty for a month, two months, whatever it is. I, I just can't see the impact uh, uh, being that great.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, I have looked at uh people's trash, and I, I see a lot of things in there that look like old clothes and stuff that, you know, could be recycled uh in other ways besides trash. And I also think because the uh recycling center isn't open, the swap shop and so forth, it limits people's options. Um, at this point, is there any way that the recycling center would be opening in the near future, Lynn?
Sure, um, so that is a request that we uh have also received, and we are working on solutions to open it in some limited, uh, less person-to-person interaction capacity sometime in early April, because we recognize that people will be home doing yard work or, you know, cleaning up um their house, and they need somewhere for items to go. I do want to say though, I don't think that that would include the swap shop. Uh, I think there's very little we could do to ensure uh that the person-to-person or um item-to-item contact would be in a ma- a manner that would keep in line with um trying to flatten the curve. Uh, but it's not out of the question. I think we just need a little bit more time to develop what that would look like. Um, and I do, I do want to add, you know, I, I understand the hesitation for people to not want to go to the store, um, but again, in Big Y, you can order Instacart and they will deliver it to your house. Um, and more and more of those home delivery options are coming online um all the time right now. Uh, I do think we could evaluate this in a week or two, at maybe even at your next meeting, and just see what it looks like. Um, but they, they do need to use some sort of bag to throw out their um, their items or their excess items, so it's, it's, they have to get a bag somewhere. Um, and, you know, certainly the financial concerns are weighing into this as well.
And a, a lot of towns have a place where people could uh put used clothing at, because I, I do believe a lot of people are cleaning up. I know I certainly try to do that. Uh, people are sorting out clothing that they haven't used in a while, and I know that that is recyclable. Uh, so I guess I would say to residents who are in that process, that they probably could find a place that they can drop off clothing that can be recycled. Um, so I would feel the same way, that it's, we probably shouldn't uh have an amnesty at this point in time, but I'm encouraged by the fact that the swap shop would be open, or, or not the swap shop, you said that, but I mean, the, the uh recycling center would be open in, you know, like a, maybe a week or two. Uh, that sounds pretty good, and I'm hoping that people in the community could just maybe put stuff to the side and hold on for a little bit longer. And then we should discuss it next meeting, so, thank you.
Mark Strange?
Yeah, I agree with Tom and um, and with, with Lynn, and I think Mark, um, that we should um not offer uh trash amnesty right now. Uh, I think the bags are dollar seventy-five or two dollars each. Um, so if you're going to have to use a blue bag, uh, one blue bag for the week, it's a couple bucks. Uh, if you're two or four, obviously, um, as long as uh residents can get, can access the bags either via uh Big Y delivery, um, or some way to work with the DPW, um, I, I don't see a reason why we would impose the, uh, trash amnesty.
Thank you. Um, I think it could be a very expensive amnesty. I know I'm cleaning house like I've never cleaned before, and everyone else is doing beyond spring cleaning. This is sort of like ten year cleaning, we're finally getting that stuff out of the basement. So the recycle center will be a really valuable uh time to open, so we, uh, Tom's requested it on the next agenda, so we'll bring it up to the next agenda. You can give us enough data, Lynn, on where DPW and the recycle committee feels they uh think stand. I did hear from the recycle committee also, and they did not recommend it at this time. Uh, and they actually went around and did an audit on how people were putting out their garbage and what the issues seemed to be. Um, also, this is a good time to mention, um, I believe the governor has lifted any ban on plastic bags. He's encouraging uh plastic bags to be used in the stores and to not go and use our, our um recyclable bags when we go shopping. I'm not sure how Big Y or the other uh, uh, stores have responded to that in town, but that's, this is probably a good time to mention that.
Uh, Marie, I can comment.
Any other? Okay, let's go back through. Um, Tom?
Yeah, I, I was at the Big Y with my own bag the other day, and they won't put it in the bag, but they'll put it in the side and you can put it in your own recyclable bag. but they'll put it in the side and you can put it in your own recyclable bag. Um, so they have set that same parameter, but they're giving out, uh, free paper bags at the Big Y.
Um, uh, Co- uh, Mark Gold, any other comments or questions?
None.
Richard Foster?
None.
Mark Strange? Okay, thank you. And any other topics that people want to bring up? This is the end of our agenda. Um, uh, Lynn, is there anything else you wanted to mention?
Um, no.
Uh, Mark Gold?
Yeah, I'd like to know what, you know, I, I saw Long Meadow Days has been canceled. I'd like to know when and how we're going to contact the lacrosse group that's trying to plan a jamboree and let them know that that problem's not, not at, even though it's late May, you know, I, I, and I don't know if we can push the, the issue. And I think my second part of that would be looking back on how this happened. I'd like to see the, the select board put together some kind of a, a, a policy or a permit process for gatherings in town. I mean, this was a, you know, when, when that lacrosse camp came to us, it was, we're holding it and we talked to the, somebody in the school department said we could do it. We're just coming in for a road closure. And I would think that gatherings over, over a certain size ought to have a permitting process that they're using town facilities and not just say, we, we spoke to the lowest possible person on the run who gave us permission to use the town facility. So now we're going to the top, ask you for approval to do it. So anyway, there's two issues. The, the short term is, you know, are they going to cancel it or are we going to compel them to cancel it? Or be, put together something long-term in terms of a permitting process, so we don't find ourselves in this situation again.
Sure, I can speak to that. Um, uh, I did reach out the day I heard that Long Meadow Days was canceled. I reached out to, um, Joshua Rice and, um, explained that, uh, Long Meadow Days had canceled and, um, asked him what his deadline was for making a decision, uh, the jamboree would go forward. Uh, his date is sometime in the middle of April, so I will be in touch with him. Um, certainly, uh, we would defer, I would hope that they would make the decision before we had to force them to make that decision. Um, but it is on, um, our radar that we need to be in touch a lot and figure out what their intent is moving forward. Um, and then, second to that, um, regarding a policy or a permit for gatherings, um, I, I think, I'm happy to work on something like that. I have experience doing that, uh, because I know these larger events can cause, um, issues other places that you hadn't anticipated, if it's not fully vetted out. But, um, this jamboree has been happening for multiple years here in town. And I think the big issue was that it was moving location to a place that was more in the center of town. Um, so I, I just thought that was important to note, that they have been in town for a while and it has been on the same days as Long Meadow Days in the past. But, um, I do think a, a plan in place for proper permitting and vetting of larger events is something that we should consider.
Um, Richard Foster, is there any other, uh, things you want to discuss tonight?
Nope.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I was down near the, uh, the river where we are capping the, uh, former dump. And, um, I noticed a lot of, a large number of trees were taken down. And I had other residents in town ask me, you know, why all these trees were removed on the north side of the dump, you know, because it could have potentially sort of blocked that area. Um, I, I guess I could understand if we took them off the southern side, because we might be able to use that for a recycle or a kind of, you know, collecting solar energy there. But I guess I would throw that out. I don't believe anyone has the answer to that question, but I just, uh, would put that out for Lynn, if you could just look into it and then get back to me when you get a chance.
Okay. I think we do have an answer for that, but, I mean, I can talk to you offline. Yeah?
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, those are scrub trees. It's illegal. That's not how, in order to legally cap the landfill, it must have, you know, layers of whatever it is, clay and sort of, it's got to have that. You can't have trees and other things that go to those levels. And the fact is that since nineteen seventy-four, those, and it's been thirty, forty, fifty years now, that stuff's just grown up, but it's not legal. It can't be part of a legal cap of a landfill. So, you know, yeah, we might have liked to cut the trees, but it, it's inconsistent with what's called capping a landfill.
Okay, yeah, because there's some pretty big trees there that went down.
Fifty years old now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Um, Mark Strange?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay. All right. I think looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Uh, Mark Strange moved it. Is there a second?
Uh, I have three seconds.
Okay, um, any discussion? All right, uh, roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes?
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us. And our next meeting will be on April sixth at seven o'clock. And right now, we're probably still looking at a remote meeting. If you had any difficulties in accessing, uh, this, uh, meeting, please, uh, send us an email or give us a call and we'll try to fix any technology problems you might have. Thank you again and be safe.